Go for it.
Yep.
Okay, so this time I'd like to call to order the June 10th, 2021, the meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission, in that we take a roll call for whoever's here.
Okay. Jason Dale.
Here.
Robert Sherry.
Here.
Charles Aben.
Here.
Gina Morris. Chris Wright.
Here.
Sharon Capri. Think she's excused absent. Jeffrey Musall.
Here.
And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'd like to ask now if there's any one that would like to make a public comment for items not on the agenda, if there's anyone in the room at all. Hearing none, we'll move on to item four, which is our consent to lender. And first part of that is the planning commission minutes from the last meeting of May 13th, 2021. Any comments, concerns, or questions about the minutes?
Okay. Planning Commission, you're right, move to approve planning commission minutes for May 13th, 2021. On 5th of May 13th, 2021.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes and a second, can we get a vote?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Very much. Minutes are approved. So let's move on down the line. And if I'm reading my agenda right, we don't have that much on the docket this evening. Slide first up. Get back in there. Page two.
Alright, so for the record, Doug Rucks, Development Director. Um, so tonight is more of a discussion, no PowerPoint, I'm PowerPointed out. 16 months of PowerPoints, I'm done. Now that just to kind of have a conversation. So, you know, we've been working for a number of years now, moving towards evaluations if Newburgh needs to do an urban growth boundary expansion or not. So we did the housing needs analysis. And that HNA indicated that we had deficiencies in our medium density and our high density residential, and we had a surplus in our low density residential. Then we did the economic opportunities analysis, and that identified that we had a surplus in our commercial land, but we had a deficit in our industrial land. Then we did our public semi-public land analysis, which fed into both of those prior analysis, determined the surpluses and the deficiencies. So, you know, we spent, like I said, a number of years kind of working through all of this. And so in your memo that I provided to you, I outlined some of the kind of the key component pieces of the the HNA. And of course, everybody needs to remember that the HNA is based upon a population projection. So that comes from Portland State University, from their Population Research Center. And so over the next 20 years, we're projected to grow a little less than 8,000 people, 7,995, if you wanted to be approximately accurate. So we're going to continue to grow. We've factored in group quarters as part of that calculation because we do have the university here. I think in the next census that's coming out, the 2020, and I think our consultants brought this up when we were dealing with the HNA, there's some portions of group quarters that may get reclassified, I mean, as retirement facilities that may get reclassified as group quarters. And so it doesn't affect the work that we've already done, but it would affect work that's occurring in the future. Newburgh generally has a household size of about 2.61. So that is actually trending downward. It used to be higher. So household sizes are actually shrinking. If you go through the PRC estimate, birth rates are dropping across the board. So that's leading to smaller household sizes. The vacancy rate in Newburgh, we use the safe harbor provision of about 5.5. It actually may be a little less than that. We know that we, it's really a challenge to find a place to live in Newburgh right now, either for sale or for rent. We're going to need about a little over 31 households or dwelling units over the next 20 years, and that averages about 158 units a year. So that's a combination of detached, single-family duplexes, triads, quads, cottage clusters. And multifamily. And so with the dupe, the middle housing provisions, now we're changing our code, you know, multifamily will be five units and above, and then we'll have different gradations as we move down to the detached, single-family component of that. The, we're going to have some employment that's going to occur in our residential areas. So people are going to have a home occupations. I'd like to get in, I think we will, over the course of the next year, start digging through our business license data to get better understanding of what we've got for home occupations. We've, and these numbers are going to change a bit. And so one of the things I've shared with the council on several occasions now, we were going through the HNA, we were not required to account for the middle housing piece in our HNA when we did it. But the question has continuously come up. So had some conversations with DLCD staff, and they concurred, we didn't have to until we did our next housing needs analysis. But since the question keeps coming up, I've asked our consultants to go back and account for a 3% of middle housing occurring as part of that overall 3,169 dwelling units. That's going to change our number a little bit. Is essentially going to say that we've got about a 35 acre surplus in our low density residential. Our high density is going to stay at about 45, and I need to go back and relook at the numbers, but our deficit in our medium density is going to drop down to roughly about 36. So it didn't change the numbers much because 3% of that number, when we put it into all of the formulas, equates to 57 dwelling units. So it was not a big number. But I wanted to address the issue because the question keeps coming up. In our EOA, we had a gross surplus of 21 acres of commercial land. The net, after we take out the public semi-public brings us down to 18 acres. We're going to continue to see employment growth occurring. In your memo, it talks about, you know, a little over 4,400 jobs over the next 20-year period. And in our industrial, we're, when we factor in the whole issue of the need for public and semi-public lands, and that's stuff that the city may need, you know, more land for our water treatment plant, land for booster pump stations, land that the county is going to need, and that was related to transit, and a bus storage facility, and some land for a transit mall area, and so forth. We end up with about a deficiency of about 165 acres of industrial land. And that does not include redevelopment of the mill site. So that's considered in the redevelopment category. So people have asked me, well, we've got the mill site, and I said, yep, the mill site will redevelop. But after, considering that, we still need approximately another 165 acres of industrial land. So with that kind of background, I had the first round of conversations with the city council in May about what do we need to do, or should we do regarding our, our land efficiency? So there's a number of options, and they kind of range from, well, we'll be more efficient with the land that we already have. So we've done some things with that. We've talked about if you do an annexation of 15 acres or more, 10% of that land has to include high-density residential. We've addressed the accessory dwelling unit. And so we, you know, it's not a big number, but we're seeing several a year that are occurring. We're working through all of the middle housing programs. So we just, council, and I was going to get to this later, but I'll mention it now, the council adopted the ordinance on Monday night for the duplex. They held their work, joint work session with planning commission on Monday on the other middle housing, and that will come back to council in the fall. We will, we've identified in our HNA, some strategies of things that we need to look, look at. So we've actually got a little less than 50 items that have been identified in our housing work program to address over the next five years. And in five years, we still don't address all 50 of those. It's basically looking at trying to do three to four, maybe sometimes five, depends upon the volume of work that would be necessary to put that, that material together. And so as part of the UGV expansion, we have to look at efficiency measures. And I'm actually in the process right now of applying for a grant to do a housing production strategy. So that's the next step after the HNA. So I'm going to be putting that application in by the end of June. And so that will go back and look at the strategies we've identified in the housing needs analysis. It will take our little less than 50 items identified on our housing work program, which includes some of the elements out of the housing needs analysis. And then we'll look at other elements and items. And kind of one of the things we really haven't addressed very deeply is houselessness or homelessness. And so I'll put that together. So that'll be the next step in this process. So we've got some choices to make. I'm going to be having another work session with council on June 21st, talking about UGV expansion, what should we do? My hope is, is that by the time we get to the July meeting with the city council, is that they will provide me some direction of what they would like to do. And, but I wanted to make sure that we had the voice of the planning commission involved in that. So when I get back on the 21st, I'd be able to say, yes, planning commission has also talked about this. And here's some comments and views and opinions and so forth from them. In your memo, I outlined, there's kind of a series of options to consider. And so with the deficiency that we have in our medium density and our low density, we could look at trying to do a comp plan and a zone change to, to upzone, or upcategorize, maybe a better phrase, some of that low-density residential to meet some of that deficiency in medium and high density. But even when you do that, you're still deficient in medium and high density. And so that doesn't fully solve the problem. So then we looked, I looked at, well, what with this surplus we have in commercial? So what if you did low-density, some designation changes, and you dealt with the 18 acres of commercial, you're still deficient in medium and high density. And I shared with the council, and I said, but we also need to be cognizant of the fact that if you change your commercial, in several years, we're going to be deficient in commercial. And here's the reason why. Crossview Crossing. The commercial portion, or substantially the commercial portion of that project was approved by the planning commission through a planned unit development to be residential. And so if I, just that one project alone will put us in a deficiency in commercial in several years. I won't, I won't say two, I won't say five, I just kind of have to say several. Then we've had a number of inquiries from other property owners about potentially changing their commercial to residential, because that's where our need is right now, is in the residential side. So that could further push us into a deficiency in the future in residential. So it's always kind of, you know, be cognizant of that. You know, it's like being the stagehand, and you're pulling the levers for the curtain. This curtain's supposed to go up, and this one's supposed to go down, this one's supposed to go partly down, and so forth. Every time you pull one, there's a cause and effect, and something will happen. And so we just need to be kind of cognizant of all of that. Then took another kind of look at this, and this is not a detailed analysis. It's not a back of the napkin either. I mean, it's based upon data that we have. So even if you took some of our low-density and our commercial, and you changed the designation to address the medium and the high density, you don't have enough land. So then you could theoretically look at, well, then we need to do an urban growth boundary expansion. And the original number out of the, the first version of the 2021 HNA was about 87 acres. That's going to drop down to about 83 acres or so. When we factor in the middle housing component of that. But then you need to start to look at the whole hierarchy in the, in the Oregon system. So what you look at first is your urban reserve areas. So in your packet, I have maps that are there. There's one that shows you the green hatch lines. Those are our urban reserve areas. So we have the North Hills, which is south of Bell Road, up behind the Allison Inn kind of area. So from Spring Brook over to Aspen Way, back behind the Allison up to, to Bell Road. Then we have another area, which is what we call the Clemic URA, and that's kind of to the northeast of the hospital. It's off Clemic and Harmony. And that area I shared with the council is, it gives us, from past experiences, you know, if we ever need to bring that into the urban growth boundary, would that be more beneficial as more of a health services kind of location because of its proximity to the hospital? And I've seen this happen in other communities I've worked in, where you have your primary healthcare facility, but you don't have the land base around it for those supporting businesses into that healthcare system. And so then you start to disperse it out. And so then you get people traveling more, you know, we get into the whole vehicle miles travel conversation, and you get into greenhouse gas stuff. So, you know, kind of an idea, thought, concept is, well, you kind of create this node of healthcare services. I'm not saying it's going to all be Providence, you're going to have independent operators. When you look at that area now, we've got Oregon Clinic to the south of the hospital, you've got Marquee, you've got the memory care, you've got the retirement facilities, kind of all in that little node between Bruecher, Fernwood, Highway 99 kind of area. And then we have another URA that's south of Fernwood and north of Wilsonville Road, the old Wilsonville Road alignment, back behind the backside of the manufactured home park. And I put a map in your packet that shows, that's the corridor for the bypass. And ODOT has bought up a number of properties in that particular sub-area for that bypass improvement for phase two in the future. Then we've got another urban reserve area that's down south of Wainewski. So think of west of Highway 219, south of Wainewski Road. And when you look at the development that's around that area right now, it's industrial. We've got Cal Portland is out there, our wastewater treatment plant is on the north side of Wainewski, we've got some industrial buildings. So when you're looking from a residential perspective, you know, do you want to put residential within industrial areas where you've got noise, dust, odors, clanging, banging in those inherent conflicts that occur? And so then we kind of took the, look at the option C and all of that, and said, well, you don't do any efficiency measures, you don't do any upzonings, and you just really look at the urban reserve areas as, yeah, we're going to do a UGV expansion. Here, we're going to meet our deficiencies of our residential. And then we're going to look at these urban reserves. And so think about the hierarchy in the state system, as you look at urban reserve areas first. Then you look at exception lands. In the last map in your packet is really telling. And I think that's really an important map to take a look at, because that shows you where there are exception lands and resource lands. So on that map, if you see something red, in the dark red, those are areas where there are geologic hazards of some kind, which are predominantly landslide areas. Anything that's in the lighter yellow is exception lands. But when you get up north of Bell Road, though it may be exception lands, the topography really starts to rise. It's in the end of steep slopes. And then the dark, kind of the brownish color are resource lands. And so those are lands that have the class one through six soils. And so as you, when you look at this map, which is attachment seven, is you see, we've got a lot of resource lands around Newburgh. And we do have some exception lands as well, kind of out off of the Highway 240, Highway 99 corridor. Again, I mentioned north of Bell Road, but we've got some steep slopes up there, has a whole different set of issues with infrastructure, especially water. And then you've got some exception lands over on the east and kind of to the southeast. So Dog Ridge Road is an exception, but that's all downstream from our wastewater treatment plant. You got a little exception off of Wilsonville Road, and then you got the stuff off of Corral Creek. So we did a similar type of cursory analysis, looking at the industrial component of that. And so again, we looked at, if you took the 18 acre surplus of commercial and said you changed it to industrial, you still are wholly deficient at meeting your industrial land supply over the course of the next 20 years. And so then we moved to kind of to the, to the next level, thinking this all through, and started to look at those lands that are pages here. Yeah, looking at those urban reserve areas again, we always have to go back to the urban reserve areas. That's where we would look at first. And when you do that, then you start to get to this whole issue of industrial sites need to be relatively flat, you know, less than 7% slope. So if you go up into the North Hills URA, you've got a lot of topography. And then again, at least from my perspective, though it's not necessarily in the protocols, and the steps we have to go through is like, well, do you really want, if you had a few parcels that were flat, do you really want to put industrial and then surround it by residential? Again, experience has taught me, those inherent conflicts. The Clemic one, again, coming back, it's relatively flat, but you know, what about our healthcare? It's one of our top three sectors of our economy is our healthcare. And how do we need to ensure and protect that if we have a growing and aging population in the future? Then we get to the area of Fernwood and Wilsonville Road, and then again, that's in the bypass corridor, there's not a lot, a lot that's left there. And then you get to the Wainewski Road, which is already industrial area, but a lot of that urban reserve area is going to end up having more than likely a stream corridor designation over it, because there are wetlands, streams, steep slopes, vegetation. There's a whole nother level of analysis that we did back in 1995 would have to occur down in that area. And so when you look at the map, and it says, oh, there's all these hatched areas, then you, a lot of that's going to go away. It's not going to be developable. So I've already kind of talked about this whole issue of this prioritization of looking at urban reserves, exception lands. I didn't get much into the discussion about, if you don't have a sufficient land supply, then you look at resource lands, and then there's a hierarchy for that. So you look at class four, five, and six lands first, those are the lower value resource lands. And if you still don't have enough, then you look at the class one, two, and three, which is your high-value farmlands. And I didn't include that particular map in your packet, but a lot of the farmland that's in those darker brown is, a lot of it is in that class one, two, and three. It's the high-value resource farmland. So a lot of challenges that are sitting out there. So in your packet, I, you know, I provided you with a copy of just the comp plan designation again, so you can see where the green hatched areas are. There's a copy of the zoning map that's in there. The buildable lands inventory for the residential, I know you've seen this a number of times. But it's the color-coded areas, you know, it could be kind of a pink, or a green, or a lighter brown, or a darker brown, kind of colors are areas where we could get residential development. And we're already seeing residential already occurring in the riverfront area. We've got river on subdivision occurring north and south of the bypass. So we've got those particular components at play. Then there's the map in the packet that identifies, you know, the lands that have been bought by ODOT for next phase of the bypass. So there's a bunch of land that's to the east of Worth Boulevard and Providence Drive that's been bought up, some stuff south of Fernwood Road, several parcels north of Wilsonville Road, Old Alignment, and then some parcels up by Highway 99. So that, still some more to acquire in order to make phase two of the bypass work as well. And then that attachment seven, I think is again, kind of the telling one to kind of see what our, how the, the resource lands look, and exception lands look around, around Newburgh. So again, this is not one for, you know, an absolute answer, but more kind of looking for some feedback about some observations from the planning commission about, you know, what do you think our options are? You know, does it range from, oh, we can address all of our deficiency issues just with the existing land supply within the UGV? Or do we need to do some efficiency measures and some UGV expansion? And if so, you know, should we be looking at our urban reserve areas? Then with the caveat is we've got industrial lands, and those needing relatively flat sites, and are there sufficient lands within either an urban reserve or an exception area that can meet that particular need? One of the pieces of the conversation we've had for several years is if you looked at exception lands and kind of take the stuff, the land area that's off of the Highway 240 and 99, and say, well, yeah, you could put some industrial out there. It raises the question of spending all this money for the bypass to get the traffic, the truck traffic out of downtown. If you put industrial over on our west side, the question is, does that put truck traffic right back downtown? So we spent hundreds of millions of dollars to trying to make, you know, downtown a walkable, vibrant, pedestrian-oriented. And did we make decisions that kind of completely counter that and put the traffic right back to where it was before? So a lot of, lot of nuances in this. And again, we're not here to make a decision, we're just here to gather feedback and opinions and views. And I will take those back to the city council in our next conversation on the 21st. With that, I've spent my 20 minutes, 25 minutes, I think I've said enough.
Presentation, I think it's, it looks like it would be hard to get around at least some expansion of the urban growth boundary.
Doug, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
On the last map from the 2030 Urban Growth Boundary Project, I think that was the original map from that, from 2017, that one mile buffer and 1.5 mile buffer, is that a you have to you have to use the GAS program to do the properties touching the city boundaries? Or does it have to be a buffer circle like that, the study area?
Yeah, that particular map was put together when we were looking at the simplified UGB methodology. And in that, it said we had to look at one mile and then certain situations out to a mile and a half. If we go through the division twenty four UGB process, we would be looking at a one mile radius around our existing UGB. So yes, Chris, we would basically take our UGB and we would draw a one mile line around the perimeter.
Okay, so the URA that's up in the north with the work, okay, let me see that again. That, that map, okay, if you go the, the one mile, you only have the one slide area. That's just outside that URA to the north, but it's still in that URA to the south, a little corner of it, unbuildable lands. If you go out to the one point two, now you've got three formations of unbuildable lands and all that. So I would think to limit it to the one mile buffer. If that was the steady area, I don't know if that to, to try and stay out of those lands that have slight issues. Because by the time you get through doing infrastructure, other things, it's you just can't build in there. It causes too many problems. I would concur the URA down at Wynewski and the UR and the one that ODOT has procured many of infill in there. That also is a lot of stream and riparian corridors and stuff, stuff like that. Floods. I looked up the soil classifications and other things and others, some maps. So there's a lot of flooding down there too. So in my opinion, like the area you also concur for medical use. Another issue of expansion, we have a very small library and post office. Could they be located over by the medical? So there's a medical library here and a library for like the colleges. Is that being considered? As part of the infrastructure? With added population?
We have not talked about that.
Okay. So given those, some of those constraints, in my opinion, looking at the geology, the zoning and other things, is it possible to consider a couple of the URAs, but also invoke an amendment to amend the urban growth boundary? Because that would also, I, I know we want to get things like a trolley in here. And with the West Rock being purchased, that industrial site, that would also open up ODOT to a grant. And I don't know if that's a consideration as well to amending the earth's urban growth boundary.
Well, it's it's one, there's a, a very kind of lockstep process to go through in the division twenty four process for UGB expansion. And we will, we have to look at all kinds of things. So again, you know, areas that if the direction is to do a UGB expansion, we will look at the URAs first. And do those URAs meet the deficiency needs? Just not on an acreage basis, but those, remember when we did the EOA, there were those site characteristics?
Yeah.
For what's necessary for industrial.
Oh, that was my other question. Do you know if in the future, if ODOT plans on putting any more highways or throughways through that would benefit our idea of where to put industrial properties with those main arterials and things like that?
There, to my knowledge, there are none. And what we've got is the Newburgh Dundee Pipe Pass, which is highway eighteen. So that would run from Dayton up to Rex Hill. So there are discussions about the segment from highway two nineteen to Rex Hill, but there's also conversations about the segment from Dundee to Dayton. That would be on the east side of the railroad tracks.
Yeah, okay.
So getting to your point about the trolley, you know, the trolley, so we have an existing rail line that runs down Blaine Street and then it goes and connects to the mill. And yes, we do have elements in our various master plans that I identify having a trolley running from downtown down to the, down to the mill, mill district area. Some of the very visionary long term of that coming out of the community visioning program. And our tourism strategy is someday, could we have a trolley that runs from the Springbrook District Village? Allison Inn area that goes down the rail line and comes down Blaine Street and hits downtown with stops and then takes you all the way down to the riverfront where you've got this park and open space and recreation area. Lots of issues to address to try to make something like that happen, but at least the, the vision has been set. The community has said, yes, we would like to have something like that and be very unique in order.
Not only do I think it would help in being a, a unique regional, a unique regional identifier. When I looked up the city of San Francisco and how many people come there and actually ride the trolleys for tourism, I think it was, well, over three hundred million people a year just come to ride the trolleys. And they had commuter statistics in there as well as local people using it. And I've talked to random a few kids and they'd be, oh yeah, I'd hop on a trolley, I'd walk down my street, hop on a trolley and go down the store, go down here, the waterfront, go enjoy this, that. A lot of them don't have cars, don't want to, that I talked to. And like you said, about getting traffic issues done, I think implementing that would cover also a lot of bases. There are a lot of things to having those trolleys, including metallurgy, taking care of them. We have schools here that might also be able to incorporate the sciences and things to do with keeping those kind of systems up as well. Long-term historical metalworking allergies and all that kind of stuff. Is it possible to, do you have to use all of the URAs in your system?
Well, the, the numbers tell us if you just did an acreage basis, we have enough URAs to accommodate just on a gross acreage, our deficiencies in our residential and industrial. That does not mean that those areas are actually conducive to industrial. So then you get to some of these trade offs. I mean, when you go through a UGB expansion, you're, you're not specifically zoning the property. You say, we're expanding our urban growth boundary and we're doing it for the, well, let me back out. We have urban reserves. So these urban reserves are the areas that we've been talking about, North Hills, Clemick, Springbrook and, and Wynewski. Those were done back in nineteen ninety five. We've actually have developed a lot of the northern, North Hills URA already. Then the area where Crestview Crossing is going in, that was in a URA. In a URA and brought into the UGB and now a big portion of that is being developed for residential commercial purposes. So, you know, if we did go down the path of the UGB expansion, we have to look at, go back to our EOA, say, what are the characteristics of sites that industry needs? And then we have to evaluate the URAs to say, does this one or this one or this one fit that particular, I'll use the word mold to be able to have that occur. The North Hills URA can accommodate residential? Yes. Do we already have in our North Hills, we have what we call our Bell West and our Bell East water pump stations. And in the future, we have about somewhere around a two, two million gallon to a three million gallon reservoir north of Bell Road. So we've got to take our infrastructure and we've got to pump that water up to that reservoir in order to gravity it back down. So there's already some infrastructure plans that are in place that kind of could lead you to say, oh, if you needed land for residential purposes and you have this North Hills URA and you only need eighty five to eighty seven acres of that URA, is that you could go through the analysis process and say, okay, which of that URA could be brought into the UGB to meet that deficiency? And then we would look at all the infrastructure components. But then you get to the other side of that ledger and you look at the North Hills and the topography that's there and the slopes and so forth. And you go, yeah, you may have a couple of flat areas, you know? The world's not flat. But you may have, you know, five acres here or a couple acres over here. But then, at least from my point of view of the world, as you look at it and go, do you want to put houses around industry? Where I'm, again, I brought up, you know, the dust, the noise, the clanging, the banging, the trucks and so forth. Does that create a quality of life or not? That's not in the administrative rules, not a criterion. It's just, you know, thirty plus years of experience.
Yeah.
Then I got to think about what I brought up before is about, though our numbers today tell us we got a surplus of commercial, in several years, we're going to have a deficiency of commercial. And we may actually have to be back redoing our EOA saying, oh, this development pattern has occurred based upon the land use regulations. Do we need to potentially, I don't know how many years it is, do another UGB to accommodate our commercial need? And then again, you'd start with, do we have urban reserves that we meet that particular need or not? Then you get to the most complex and that's the industrial. If we need approximately a hundred and sixty five acres of land, where could it go? Does it go west? Does it go east? But to get to east, you got to go through resource land. So therein lies a problem. Do you go southeast? I, I don't have the answer. But then we start to look at, well, where do we have existing infrastructure? And and we haven't done that analysis. I mean, there's, we budgeted money for this fiscal year. If the council chooses to provide direction to do a UGB expansion to engage. So let me back up from there. So you've seen the EOA, you've seen the HNA, you've seen the public semi-public. And so those documents have been accepted by city council. I will be going back to council for them to re-accept the HNA, which embeds this three percent middle housing number. Then if, if the council was to say, Doug, yes, we believe we should do an urban growth boundary expansion, do efficiency measures and a UGB expansion to meet our needs. My next step would be to do a post acknowledgement plan amendment process, a PAPA and notify the state and we would amend our comprehensive plan to embed the certain elements out of our HNA in our comp plan, the same thing for our EOA and the same thing for our public semi-public land. And then we'd have to go through that process and then we'd have to see, because I kind of finished the moment off, then we have to see if we're challenged or not on those. And if we were successful, then you move into actually doing all the analysis work, which will take several years for an urban growth founder expansion, analyzing all this land, you know, a mile around our existing UGB.
May I, may I add something here? I'd just like to put into the common sense thing what I, what I think. Of course, we need the urban growth boundary expansion. We've needed one since two thousand fifteen. Our urban reserve is basically exhausted at this point. We could see it was going to be exhausted at this point in two thousand fifteen. If we're looking to add industrial land, we should add it to the southeast. If we're adding to add housing, we should add it to the northwest and go along with high density along the, uh, the highway corridor of two forty and North Valley. That's all we have to do. It's just getting past the obstacles in our way to be able to get that done. And I, I think, I think I would like you to be sure to put, convey that sentiment to the city council, but at least somebody on the planning commission is trying to, trying to see the common sense. Because if you look at, you can see this needs to happen just by looking at a map.
Yes, I agree.
That's, that's all, that's all it takes. And we've, we've known this for a while and now it's, now it's time to do it. And with, with the lack of, of usable urban reserve land, it's we don't have anymore, we don't have any more excuses we can do. We could put some of the housing into the, the north part, but we definitely don't want to put industrial there. We don't want to be pushing any of that, that direction. Industrial land is, is best put in the southeast part of the unincorporated, outside the city there. And that's what we should be doing and, and working towards in my honest opinion.
Yeah, that definitely makes sense now, down there for the industrial and everything. Just a, just a question more on how things work like that. Say we expand the urban growth boundary into the, the reserves. Is that something down the line we'll have to look at? Or where, where do those reserves come from, I guess, what I'm asking? Because if we use it, use it all up in the urban growth boundary, is that something we do with the county to expand the reserve areas?
It's, it's a joint process. So there, again, it's in the state of Oregon. So there is a process to go through and establishing urban reserves. And so the city did this in nineteen ninety five. They attempted to do it again in that time period of two thousand five and two thousand and seven. And that process was not successful. So right now, you know, I've been asked on our work program, is this one where, you know, am I going to look at, do we need more urban reserve land? And right now I said, that's not in our work program. It's not a council goal. I can also say, and that's something that planning commission will not touch, is that we have received an application for an urban reserve expansion out on the east side of Newburgh. But that application will actually go to the Newburgh Urban Area Management Commission, which is a joint commission between the city and the county. I will brief the planning commission on that application, but you do not have any hearings. You do not make any recommendations on that. I haven't read through the application yet to see what the numbers look like. So Mr. Chair, that's kind of, yeah, there's a process to go through to designate urban reserve areas.
Plant commissioner, right? I would as well concur that no matter which way you slice it, you're going to end up with a deficiency somewhere shortly down the road. And what is buildable, what is already starting to be infilled, et cetera. I also concur with the other counselor about south, southwest, to the southwest of
Southeast.
Southeast. Okay, so more up towards the hills. Oh, okay, the southeast corridor down there. Okay.
Yeah, basically just follow two nineteen essentially.
Yeah, okay. So still, how much acreage is that down there to the south?
I do not have that number off the top of my head.
And when we expand the urban growth boundary, I noticed like in the one point five buffer ring, it extends into Washington County a little bit. What are the confines of going into a different county?
There aren't any confines. It's just, you know, the topography is, is you're all going uphill. You know, so if you, if the further you go uphill, that means you need more reservoirs. And then, you know, there's a cost for land acquisition and building reservoirs and getting the, the proper pressure, the water pressure through a gravity feed system. This is essentially right now, Newburgh operates in two zones, a zone A and a zone B. So if you get above three hundred feet in elevation, you need to go into zone B. We've currently got forty homes that are in zone B that are served by zone A by a booster pump station. But we also have the Veritas School. Um, but we also have the Veritas School, North Valley French Church, which are in zone B and the city is working on what we call the Bell, Bell West, uh, water booster pump station. That would help serve those existing areas. We also know we have portions of our existing U G B beyond those that are in zone B. Then if we look at, uh, U G B expansions and U R A, especially in the North Hills, there's a significant portion of that area which would be in zone B. So that's what leads you to, you know, the, in the future, there's this new water reservoir north of Bell Road of two to three million gallons in size. That we can pump the water up from two directions. One would be up, uh, Zimri Drive, the other one would be up College and then Bell Road and go to this water reservoir and then we could gravity feed that water back to serve future development in zone B.
Now, with things like that, is that something developed solely by the city or is that something in cooperation with developers?
That would be the city.
Uh, just there's a, uh, needs to be a correction, I think, to the memo, page two of fifteen. Last second paragraph from the bottom. It starts out, based on land demand, Newburgh is forecast to have twenty-one gross acre surplus. The last line of that says semi-public uses, the deficiency is eighteen acres, shouldn't that be? The opposite?
Nope, I know, every time people read that, every time if somebody reads that, it's so what we have is a gross acre deficiency of twenty-one acres when we factor in the, um, the public semi-public, it comes to a deficiency of eighteen, so it's, it's inverting the math, the number is correct, went through that many times with my consultants. So the first time I read it, I asked the same question, I said, what kind of math are we doing here?
Because, yeah, I was thinking, well, don't we need more like, you know, those two numbers together? Like minus eighteen.
You have, you have the twenty-one, but you've got two point nine acres of public semi-public can be used for that commercials. That leaves you the net of eighteen developable acres.
So when you say, uh, gross acre, acres, acreage, is that places that are also found within residential, kind of that spot land versus flat acreages zoning?
Nope, it's all the land that's zoned for, zoned for, or has a comprehensive plan designation for commercial.
I, I've got a couple of comments, um, I'd like to put forward. First off, Jason, I, I totally agree with, with, with what you, um, have come up with.
Thank you.
We, we need to go south with industrial, there's no other place to go. And, and going north, um, up on the North Hills area for, for housing. That's a toughie. I'm, I'm involved in an out of state project where we're doing just that right now. And I got to tell you, it's tough, it's expensive and, um, houses will go up there, but those houses will be for very high-end people. That's only those can afford to, to build. And that's what we're learning in, in our project, it's, it's, it's like that and, and we're spending a lot of money to get it done. No areas we ought to look at for residential. We live in the greens and east of that. There's farmland over there, but I don't view it as high volume. Farmland at all, they, they want a cattle ranch and it's for sale right now for sixteen million dollars and it's flat. And south of it, there's a horse ranch, same thing. Board horses, but it's all good for residential land. And, you know, some of the utilities are there, the, the water reservoirs nearby and um, I'm sure they can tie in with the sewer and all of that kind of stuff too from the greens. You know, for the residential end of it, one of the things that the city needs to do is, you know, instead of going up, sure, we're going to do, or going out, so we need to go up. We need to go higher than three levels, we need to go to four or five, like they do everywhere else in the state. That'll help take care of our problem too. But, you know, the toughest problem I think is, is going to be the industrial, because that's a lot of acreage and it's going to be tough to get it.
If we go up four to five stories, Doug, how does that, um, on adjacent properties with sun exposure? Uh, do you know what laws or criteria I'm talking about? Something to do with sun exposure, that your building doesn't block off.
We would have to look at all of that, Commissioner. There have been conversations in the past, in my time at the city about should we go up in structure height? Then that leads to the question of the NIMBYs not in my backyard. Jason probably said, no, I don't want, you know, three is too much, I want it to be just like what I've got. So when you say, oh, we want to go up, you know, four to five stories in height, it's like, no. So there's that community pushback. Then when you go up in height, because we do not have a robust transit system, then you have need for more parking. And so all of a sudden, when you start to look at some of the size of the sites that we have, they may not be big enough, I mean, you, you, you could say, you know, we're going to have a, a fifty-five or sixty-foot height limit. But when then you look at the parking requirements, you say, I can't, I can't get the units on there to accommodate it. And again, with the transit system we have, we have one, it's not, it's not robust like you would find in, in Portland or Salem or Eugene. And so that makes it challenging, how do people move around? We do have some sun exposure provisions for our planned unit developments, but we do not have that for other development.
So that's not always going to be an issue.
Well, it, it could be, I mean, just because we don't have something on the books today, doesn't mean that if you, proposal was put forward to say, well, yeah, we're going to increase our high-density residential designation to, uh, four-story buildings from its current three. Somebody could say, well, now you need to have sun exposure because you, you know, you shouldn't be shading my backyard. So it's again, just, you know, people have views and opinions and they're all great to share all of those, it just means we, we would have to look at that. Then there's the, um, uh, how do I say this one, the, uh, we've, I've floated with past planning commissions and Jason may remember this, uh, should we have a new high-density residential zone? And if we did something like that, so that it gets to Robert's question about, you know, having more structure height. If we did that, then, you know, where might that be? Should it be around the downtown area? Should it be on the ninety-nine corridor? Uh, just where, again, I don't have the answers. But even when you get to the downtown area, then, and so let's take this as a hypothetical. Let's say between second and third, the half block south of second is zoned for R three, what if you went to an R four? Or five, whatever we wanted to call it, and we said, oh, instead of of, um, having three-story buildings, we can say, let's have four. Then what you get is the people across Third Street saying, whoa, whoa, wait a second. You know, my, my neighborhood is basically an, an older neighborhood of one and one and a half and sometimes two-story homes and now you're talking about building four-story apartment buildings across the street from me, and so you get to this neighborhood character livability issue. And that would all have to be taken into consideration, Blaine Street is another one. So we have, in our comp plan, it identifies a bunch of land for uh, high-density residential development, if you look at it, we've got a few apartment buildings, which are two-story. But we got mostly it detached, single-family homes. Sitting on smaller parcels of, you know, five thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand square feet. For a developer to come in and do a high, higher density residential project, he's got to assemble a number of parcels to be able to get to a point that he can get a, a number of units. That he knows that his cost per door is going to be this and his rent levels are going to be this. To be able to have the profit margins to be able to build that, so Robert's aware of this, I'm kind of dumbing it all down, but the pro forma's got to work.
I, I think
You get into some of these paper exercises, you can designate stuff for high-density residential. And here's the case, those, some of those areas I was just talking about have been designated high-density residential since nineteen seventy-nine. And are you seeing high-density residential development occur in those areas? So it becomes a paper exercise. It's not that you're responding to what your housing needs are, the number of units you need to be producing on an annual basis. You've just got these designations and they sit there.
We've also made some changes to the downtown. And that haven't been, uh, given a little time to take effect, that are kind of moving towards that direction by having mixed-use commercial with housing and that sort of thing. So, you know, there is a few rules in place to do that, but, uh, not quite to the level of, of building. And most of those, um, buildings that are available for three-story haven't been modified yet, so we haven't done that part yet. So before, before you go to four, maybe you need to see if they're even going to go to three.
Yeah, because remember, we've done the, we just, council, I was going to get to that later, but the council adopted the vertical housing development zone, so there's partial tax abatement.
Yeah.
For those floors, for the first, second, third and fourth floor of residential now in the downtown area, that ordinance will go and affect a little less than thirty days. But again, as Jason said, it's early and it took us a couple of years to get the program put in place. And once it's in place, and now that we have the construction excise tax where we're generating some money, couldn't we partner with a developer to build a project where we've got some affordable housing units that are eighty percent or less of the median family income? And reserve for that income level for sixty years? Charles, you've been quiet.
Yeah, just absorbing it, um, yeah, just absorbing and listening to everybody talk. Because it, everything that you guys have said, it, it makes sense, just specifically the fact that that's such a hard thing to, uh, to go about, I mean, you have to take in consideration on whether or not to take, uh, to readjust what's currently there for efficiency, but it may not be the best way to do it because some people don't want to have industries, industrial land right next to where they live. And then, just having the idea of moving the urban growth boundary, it, that's a whole nother level of having to do more analysis on whether or not that actually will, which it should, it should benefit, but it's just a lot more. It's definitely a lot more work, but I think, as everyone else said, it's probably going to be better to look at either expanding the urban growth boundary, looking at the urban, uh, reserve areas. And, um, rather than just, as one of the recommendations in the packet was, uh, trying to adjust what's currently there. Mainly because, yeah. Some people don't want to wake up in the morning and then see some buildings making stuff, I mean, it's just, it just doesn't, yeah, it doesn't make any sense.
I have a curiosity question just on the, the height thing. And just, uh, just your thoughts, say you did go to four. And like, uh, like Jason was saying and, and everything, we haven't really filled out the three yet, uh, and that's in process, but what are your thoughts, Doug, on if we, if it goes to four? Does that give more incentive, is that possibly, you know, does that give permission for the people to come in and say, go to three and say, you know, they kind of get this little buffer, oh, I'm not doing as much as I can, you know what I mean? It's kind of like a little permission slip to go ahead. And not go all the way up to the standard, you know what I mean?
I'm not sure that I have an absolute
Some of the heat off the developers, what I'm kind of getting at.
I don't think I have an absolute answer to that, I mean, you know, you could drive new multifamily by a floor area ratio model and say, you know, here it is, you can only go, you know, some percentage less than that. You, maybe you get some credits if you went above, above that number. That's kind of one school of thought and, and models that I've seen. You know, if you go with taller buildings and say, oh, now we need more buffer around the building. So that, you know, basically increasing the setbacks and increasing the buffering requirements and what those, those can be to make them more compatible with the adjacent or existing residential areas, that's another way. Possibly you could combine the two. Um, you could look when you're doing, you know, four or five-story buildings and require, instead of that being a monolithic wall plane going up four or five floors, you know, that you have to step the building back, you need some articulation in that building, those exterior building elevations. But then that drives yet another architects and engineers' design issue, because every time you step those back, you you, you change the structural construct of that structure and it costs more to build. So we start to battle with, well, we're trying to get more affordable and workforce housing, but the more design elements that you put in to them increases the cost. Then we've got this other provision that says that needed housing, and we are in that needed housing, needs to have clear and objective standards. So you can have a two-track system, you can have clear and objective and you can have subjective and that leaves the developer to pick which one they might want to go down. So when you start to go down the clear and objective standards, you know, you, you have to be pretty precise, but you can theoretically, you can write those standards such that it significantly increases the cost per unit for construction and so you're not addressing the affordability issue. Nobody wants us to build the barracks, you know? Here's the rectilinear building that's three-story, that's basically got a pitched roof, it's got a gable on either end. And it's got windows and it doesn't have any decks, it doesn't have any patios and it really looks like a military barracks and you know, I don't, I don't know many people who want to live in one and/or develop one.
Traveled around Eastern Europe and things like that, I've heard it called the trucev model.
Yeah.
You know, the big block building.
Or living in San Francisco, when you open up your window, you can literally touch the building right next to you. Having buffers is awesome.
It's not a simple thing. You start from this, you know, should we expand our urban growth boundary, given the deficiency numbers that we already have and people can have opinions of that, but then you quickly start to get down to the, to the design of what it's going to look like. And then, and often in group processes, you need to go there before you can pop back up again and say, okay, now what does that mean about our deficiency, you know, what, what should we do or not? There's a lot of details underneath all of that, a lot of analysis that needs to occur. To try to make something happen and Newburgh's not unique, it's, that happens all over the state of Oregon.
You know, if you, if you go to Portland, some of the neighborhoods there, there, they have five-story, four-story buildings in a residential neighborhood. With single-family residences all around them, how they pulled that off, I don't know. But you can, you can see it everywhere.
They, they think they have better infrastructure, I, I think is how they're doing that.
Say that again, Jason?
Better infrastructure, you know, uh, water capacity, sewer capacity, transportation, that sort of thing.
Yeah, yeah, that helps.
Yeah, that gets to another element that we haven't even, you know, we've scratched on yet is when you start to look, when you go up in structure heights and you have more units per acre, that has an impact on the transportation system, the water system, the wastewater system. And is our infrastructure sized to accommodate that or not? There may be areas that do, there may be areas that And is our infrastructure sized to accommodate that or not? There may be areas that do, there may be areas that do not. And so all of a sudden you say, oh yeah, here's the new standards. And somebody walks in and says, yeah, I want to build this five story apartment building. And we say, well, you need to do the downstream analysis on the wastewater system. And all of a sudden, you know, now they're down, you know, hundreds of feet, thousands of feet, whatever it may be, that they have to upsize all of those pipes in order to accommodate that development. So the prudent developer does those kinds of calculations early and they look at it and say, well, this doesn't make sense to do this. So I'll just build three instead of five. Cause I can make it work.
Doug, I had another comment on, on the opportunity zone comment you had in there on the, on the mill project. That sun sets in 2028.
Yep.
And it's just going to go away. So we ought to be aware of that.
I, I am aware of that. And when I do talk with parties who may have an interest in developing in the, on the old mill site is that your, your your potential tax benefit that the federal government created, that window is getting shorter and shorter. And so your benefit is getting narrower and narrower.
Yeah.
But we still do have the enterprise zone designation. So that will be in place for another, see that was 2013. Another six years, I believe it is. And then we have the opportunity to apply for a renewal. So that could get you up to a three year tax abatement on new buildings and equipment that are over $50,000 in investment. So that's still an, an attractor, but it's not
Doesn't do anything with capital gains though, does it?
No, it doesn't have anything to do with capital gains.
Yeah.
So what about these, the, is that some of the new market credits or the EB5 investment program?
No, these, those are different.
Okay. I'll look them up, you know? I'll look into those before I go there or ask. Um, as another thing, have you ever considered in there, you have a, that in the River Street master plan on the bluff, you'll need geotechnical studies. Have you ever thought about addressing like Portland State University, the geology department usually takes on projects? But the seniors as a geomorphologist, you know, underneath them and things like that. Has the city ever considered cooperating with the university?
We haven't reached that, that level. Again, you know, we, we adopted the master plan. We finishing up all of our infrastructure plans of the last one is the stormwater, which goes to council on June 21st. We have not gotten to the point of even starting discussions about, well, then we got the urban renewal program, which will be in front of council on August 2nd. And so we have not started those conversations about what project might come first and who's all involved in those. It's just, there's a litany of other things that we're trying to get completed first.
Okay. I just didn't even know if you guys were aware that some, like the city of Portland did a lot of studies with the PSU geology department. And that saved them a lot of money.
It's an opportunity. So I've got that note written down now. Any other thoughts, comments?
Well, there's no easy answers.
Yeah.
The easy answers were done in 1950s.
Yeah. Oh, I like that Doug. A lot. Because yeah, like, like you said, there's so many variations of if you go into height issues to accommodate more residential or more housing. Then you've got other issues, other knockoff effects. If you go for some of the URAs and zoning, then you're not addressing deficiencies in the near future. Which if you have to amend your urban growth boundary, and like you said, it takes a couple of years to get that through all the process and the committees. How long is it going to take? And if you're deficient already, is that they're going to cost the city more money?
Yeah.
You know, more businesses coming in.
These projections are over a 20 year horizon. So they all don't happen, you know, within the first year or two. But at least from a staff perspective is we have the data. This is what the data tells us. What do we do next? So that's where planning commission input and sharing that may be able to share that with the city council for them to provide some direction to staff of what do you, what do you want us to do next?
And speaking of next, after the mill is taken down, do you know what their plans are? And if they immediately are planning on developing or if they're going to just sit on the property for a while?
There, we are in discussions about earnestly doing the redevelopment of the site. So those are already occurring while the demolition is going on.
I guess they've done a lot of projects like this all around the country.
All around North America, US and Canada.
So I think
First rodeo, Robert.
No, I, I looked them up. Yeah, I figured that out.
But I think as things are also now that they're involved to whereas like, you know, councillor Capri was thinking that this was going to be done immediately. And like you were telling her, oh no, this is really a long-term project. Well, I'm starting to wonder if it is that long-term and if it's going to happen faster than we thought.
I think it will, if I was to read tea leaves, I think things are going to happen faster than most people think.
Yes, I think as well. Addressing things like, like a trolley and other stuff like that, as far as infrastructure, including addressing additional transportation and other issues like that. Um, yeah.
Well, think of it this way, you know, we are giving you briefings on the urban renewal plan. So that's 104, 106.4 million dollar infrastructure program. For the riverfront and the downtown. And it's, it's all about infrastructure. It's streets, sewer, water, storm, parking lots, undergrounding utilities. It's all about leveraging to attract new development, new investment to create jobs, to create housing. And for economic prosperity for, for the community as a whole.
Yes. And yeah, a, a good example of houses being in industrial areas is going on the way to St. John's and through North Portland. There are a bunch of houses in that industrial area. And they have problems, out the problems there. And I've seen that to development and infill. But anyway, anybody else have any thoughts?
No, it's pretty informative session. And I do like, like, like we all agree that, you know, the southeast is, is definitely the industrial area. And I like the idea of the kind of medical pod over by where Providence is now. You know, I think that Doug can, you know, convey our ideas that, you know, to the north is an option, but as, as was pointed out, a more expensive option. And it, it all kind of, it kind of makes sense. We have to go with the, with the topography and land we're given.
Yeah. Oh yeah. We have some of the best soils in the world.
There you go.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you all for your feedback. Appreciate it. This is something a little bit different. We just got to kind of chat about something.
Yeah. Very good.
There's a bunch of information. Please absorb and give me direction. Or make a decision.
Well, I think you did a wonderful job as usual and all the committees and everybody is standing above and beyond due diligence. And putting this memo, you know, and all the other pieces that went into the memo together. So I definitely commend you on doing all that. You're very appreciated. And your staff. I have no further questions, comments at this time.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to add or?
Just wanted to say there is an attendee.
Would they like to speak to the commission?
Let me see. Mr. Jenkins? Don't see him unmuting himself. So I'll take that as a no.
Okay. Well, if, if no other comments, I guess we're on to items from staff, Doug.
So I kind of alluded to this in the presentation is that the duplex regulations were approved by city council on Monday evening. The urban renewal agency did the referral of the urban renewal plan and report to taxing districts on Monday evening. Council approved the annexation up off of Camellia Drive, which is up towards the north end of town. And the council approved the vertical housing development zone proposal.
Nice.
Yeah.
Thank you for all of your input on all of those projects to, to get them to where they're at. That, other than you have your forward looking calendar on items. So next month in July, we're looking at two quasi judicial hearings. And so you see the addresses on those. So if you're at Fred Meyer and somebody comes in the hallway and wants to talk to you about them, please remind yourself to, oh, just call the planning department, please. So they are quasi judicial. Don't want any ex parte contacts. And then we'll be back in front of you for the urban renewal plan for your review. If the plan is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. August, right now, we've only got a tentative for some riverfront annexation. So I am working on annexations of property in the riverfront master plan area. The bypass, some individual properties and the mill site. So those are all in the works. So I'm hoping I can get those in August. If not, I can't make that deadline. Consultants are putting together all the legal descriptions and all of that. If not, it'll probably, then would have to be pushed to October. I will not be at your September meeting. But Patrick Davenport, our planning manager, and Keith Leonard, associate planner, will be at your September meeting. I will be thinking about you as I'm off camping in the deep woods. And then I kind of penciled in for the October, depending upon direction from city council. You know, might we be looking at the October meeting to address the EOA, HNA and public semi-public into the comprehensive plan or not? And that could shift, could move to November, could move to December. That's not sure yet. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you. Any items from commissioners? We pretty much covered everything this evening.
Any update on when we might be able to have an in person, in person meeting?
Some cursory conversations are maybe September. It's all going to be dependent upon the governor and OSHA and CDC, what guidance and so forth that we get. Right now we're operating under the OSHA administrative rules. So city hall is open. The lobby is open for services from nine AM to 12 PM, Monday through Friday. It's closed in the afternoon. But we do have occupancy limitations within the various spaces within the building. And the public is required to wear a mask when you are in city hall.
Hey Doug. While I'm, while I'm thinking of it, can you send me an email with the list of the membership of that committee you mentioned earlier between county and city commissioners for urban, I forget the name of what you said, sorry.
Newburgh Urban Area Management Commission? I've got to check with the county. They were supposed to be appointing their members and I have not seen their finalists yet.
Okay. I would like to, I mean, I mean, contact them at some point, possibly.
I've got a star on my paper next to your name, Jason, with that note.
Thank you very much.
Well, anyone else have anything? Well, hearing none, I think we might as well call it a wrap and go ahead and adjourn the June 10th, 2021 meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission.
Thank you very much all. Have a great weekend.
Thanks guys. See you next time.
Have a great June, everyone.